Okay, I'll call us to order and we'll ask our clerk to establish a quorum of the board, please.
Mr. Blakemore?
Present.
Here.
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 Very good, all members are present. So, board, we do have the agenda here before you. Is there any modifications or changes to our agenda tonight? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the agenda as prepared.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion with the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. We do have our minutes in the packet from the June 27, 2024 meeting that was held here at Annex III. The clerk has prepared those minutes. Is there any modifications to those minutes from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as prepared?
Sound move.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, next item on our agenda is for public comments. Is there anyone that would like to speak tonight? Yes, sir, please come up. Please state your name for the record, sir.
Okay, General Pope. And, Mr. Gottlieb, can we follow up on what I was talking about the other time? You, I think, was going to tell us how you think the law should be worded so that it was clear, unquestionably clear, that the chairperson would have, would have the authority to continue with the day-to-day administration of the county business. Do you have any suggestions on that?
Well, the enabling act was, and has been adopted, obviously, for several years. And, you know, it defines in there that, and I'm sorry to bring my copy with me tonight, but in general, it provides that the chairperson is responsible for the day-to-day operations. It also has a section here, and it is Section Number 11, that discusses the various responsibilities and authority that the board, the entire board, has. And it also, you know, I mean, as you're aware, there have been some discussions about what fits in certain categories. And it's not unusual for different Enabling Act, or for an Enabling Act to, you know, be a matter of, a subject of interpretation. And so, this is our Enabling Act, and the board can make revisions to the Enabling Act if they deem a desire to do so under the Home Rule Act. And, you know, there are certain statutory requirements on that as well, which is a little deeper than our conversation today, but I'm sort of giving a blog stroke, you know, opinion. I don't know that there's ever anything that can be drafted that is not subject to some interpretation, or as some people like to say, that's bulletproof, because that's just words are generally subject to interpretation. I'm happy to follow up if I didn't address your specific question, or if you have follow-up questions on that.
Okay. But you think that exception clause does place limitations on the board here, though, in some way? It says, except as otherwise provided in this act, the board is, I'm not sure I got it word, word for word, but the board is granted the following items of governing authority of following items.
Let me look real quick. I was looking for one thing in particular. Now, for example, under subsection 16, the board is empowered to exercise all of the power and authority formerly vested by law in the commission of Walker County, together with the power and authority which may be delegated by law to the governing authority of the county by whatever name designated. So, again, it's, it's not always, everything in black and white is not always, you know, crystal clear, nor is it not subject to being modified. And, you know, when we talk about the Home Rule and making amendments to, or changes to this Enabling Act, there are certain requirements that have to be followed in order to do that. So, there's some protection that's afforded to the document itself, and to make changes, you have to follow certain procedures in order to enact those.
Thank you, my time is up.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Scotton Avenue, up northwest. I guess there's been a lot of talk, a lot of chatter around town, just that and the other. They're all stable, believe it or not. I think there's just a lot of things going on in the county and the city of Rossville that, you know, I live right in the middle of my butt, guys. I mean, I live, the line is right there. And I drive through the county, and it doesn't stop me and say, oh, gosh, I'm going to Rossville, I'm going to Chickamauga. We're all Walker County. I don't care how you look at it. If you live in the city, y'all pay a little more tax than I do, I'm in the county, but y'all got a few more perks than I get. Garbage, fire, police, all that. You know, there's differences. But I think, you know, it's time for everybody to kind of put a lot of this aside, but at the same time, I think sometimes you've got to look back at how we got where we are. I mean, to me, I don't want to say the wrong word, but it's a frickin' mess. And, you know, every day, it seems like somebody's bringing out a document, or somebody's saying, you know, and it's not just hearsay, it's not on social media, it's not just a rumor. I mean, there's, there's hard documents being provided that we see. Today, I'm still, I went by the Annex, I tried to get in it, I couldn't. They were still, they're still up there doing work. There's a five-man crew there today. I've looked at the place, it needs work, that's great, but does anybody have a drawing that tomorrow they're going to send a crew up to the Annex and they're going to work on a Pacific item? You know, what are they doing in there? I mean, there's, you walk in it, there's walls tore out everywhere, there's holes in the wall. What are they doing? I guess, is there a plan, for one? And maybe somebody can tell me that. This agreement, hey, if y'all can work it out, so be it. I was at the Monday night meeting. Maybe we can pull the strings and get them all happy, or whoever, and y'all can come up with a plan. I'm all for it, but just watch, you know, what we promise. But real quick, just so it's clear, the peerless gave Walker County Schools the building, originally, not vice versa, and then the school system gave it to the government. And we've had it since 1999. That's 25 years ago. That's a long time. It sat there for 10 years, and I, timeline, I've tried to put a little timeline together, but for 10 years, I personally, I can't speak, I can't find anyone that can actually tell me, once we got it, what did we do with it? Or who was in it, who was doing what in it? Nobody can tell me that. It's interesting, I'm still digging, I got a gentleman that's going to share some notes. But, so, in 2008, '09, there was an agreement, or some, basically, it was Mayor Baker and BB conversations documented on paper only. I have yet to see an actual signed document, recorded document. So, to me, it was just two people going outside, talking out in the air, and somebody started writing it down, but never know, no document signed. 2009 to 2012, I think Stump Martin was kind of involved, and Chad Hodges, he carried it for about six months. 2012 to 2021, Mr. Rogers and others, I don't know all the names, but there was several players involved, they were doing some rec stuff there in the Annex. There was some pitching and hitting, stuff going on. There again, I don't have a child in that, in that anymore, so I don't know what all was going on, but I know there was some other activities on the side that was being done. So, to say that, we go from 2021 to now, today. There again, I was up there today, up there running a crew, doing construction work. I'd just like to know what we're doing, for one. Where are we going? We got the building ready for elections, now we're working on another big old room. What are we going to, what are we doing? Okay? I would like to know that. And then, at the same time, look, RRA took it over, they're no longer active, my understanding. They were a nonprofit. I kind of understand nonprofit versus profit, but at the same time, the facility right now is being hosted for a lot of different activities that, me personally, I'm one of those, you don't, don't send me a text, don't send me Facebook, or none of that, or, I'll take a picture sometimes, worth a lot, as long as it's got a newspaper, the date that you're there, that's awesome. But me personally, I have witnessed, personally, walked in that gym and seen 80-plus Latinos playing basketball. I see nowhere in our county budgets or any line items that I've seen where we took any money in. All right? I personally witnessed a wrestling event. There's one going to be there Saturday night. Me personally, I want this back, please, but y'all can pass it around. Me personally, I'd like to know who, who scheduled this event, who paid for the event, where's the dollars gone? Because I paid $8 to go in, and the air conditioner, we just bought a brand-new air conditioner, and it was hotter than you know what. It was probably 86 degrees. And trust me, don't air condition the gym, but if you've got that air on it, pulls through. Air conditioning wasn't working. Two weeks before that, alumni was there. Air conditioning wasn't working. Miserable, poor old folks, but they endured. Okay, I'll continue.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Melissa Holsey. It was about a year ago that I received a phone call from John Persley. Let me, on a side note, say, I think John Persley is a wonderful person and an asset to this county, asking me to verify that I had a business license for a short-term vacation rental that my husband and I own. He commented that someone could not find where I had one. I informed him that it was in our business name and not in our personal name. He looked it up and verified that we were in compliance. We had a short conversation about a few other things, and it ended the call. I was impressed that the county was so concerned about verification that businesses operated legally. With that spirit in mind, I am sure this board would like to conduct the same due diligence to bring the Rossville Athletic Association and Southern Softball Association question to a close. I am asking that a full audit be conducted to verify compliance and end speculations about things that concern, that occurred. I have requested in April financial data from RAA. Although they are required to provide it per IRS statute, it still has not been provided to me. And some of the things that we know are this. RAA did not have written authorization to manage the Williams Street location. Who gave verbal authorization, and who gave the keys? RAA never had a business banking account, again, although required by the IRS for nonprofit status. All transactions were cash, check, and Venmo. The Venmo was linked to a personal banking account. Rent was collected for this county-owned facility. The wrestling match that was just passed around, I understand that was $200 a month that they paid in rent. Basketball games were hosted, private events were hosted, rent was collected outside of the scope of children's athletic events. SSA, Southern Softball Association, Mr. Blakemore's organization, was not incorporated until recently. Thus, until recently, all monies that were collected were collected personally, as a, as a sole proprietorship. There was not a banking account set up for a business, it all went personal. RAA and SSA did not have a business license that I could find, although their addresses were listed as county addresses. Some of what we need to know. What was the amount of money collected by RAA? Even though this all flowed through a personal account, and that in itself is a violation of IRS regulations, it is still possible that funds were allocated correctly. An audit would answer this question. RAA, what was the amount of money collected rent for this county-owned facility? Was it material? If it's not material, then we all should be satisfied to know this and move on. If it was material, then perhaps further action should be taken. What were the details of the verbal management agreement? Did Mr. Blakemore file correct tax returns for this sole proprietorship? Did he file a Schedule C and note all of this money as income? If not, this is a violation of the oath of office. It's called tax evasion. An audit would answer these questions. I submit that if tax evasion has occurred, it can still be corrected. An amended return could be filed, and all could be made right. We could all move forward and be in compliance. Also, it is the fiduciary responsibility of each member of this Board of Commissioners to act with the county's best interest in mind. Not personal, but the county's. In conclusion, I trust that Walker County is consistent in confirming compliance with businesses. And again, for the reasons stated, I ask that a full audit of RAA and SSA be conducted. The taxpayers of Walker County deserve to know the truth, and this issue deserves to be put to bed. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Please state your names.
Jay Tankersley.
You hand those out first, go ahead.
Take care.
I'll start your time, so you hand them out. There you go. Can you hand one back to Mr. Gottlieb? Okay, once you get the microphone, please state your name again, so they can hear you.
My name's Jay Tankersley. So, I handed you guys a sheet here. I guess my concern, outside of what everybody else is talking about, is the rec. I grew up in Walker County my entire life. Started playing ball at the rec when I was four, till I was about 12. This sheet you see is Stone Creek Elementary and Rossville Elementary, and it says, the number of students that were there in 2023 that attended, the number of students that are on free and reduced lunch, and the percent of those students. So, out of 841 students at both those schools, 87% of those children are on, I know.
You're wearing them out at home. When you get that, you're paying the microphone.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. 87% of those children, 87% of 841 children, are on free or reduced lunch. They're impoverished children. 732 children out of 841. We've got a, I forgot my agenda over there. We've got a, you know, as the coach from the recreation stood up here and said, you know, they had six kids that played, that were four and five years old, five and six-year-old T-ball players. Six kids out of 841 kids in that community. 87% of those kids are impoverished. And we're standing up here, and we're going back and forth about an agreement. The city of Rossville is mismanaged. It's been mismanaged for 50 years. They can't pay their bills. We've paid their utilities for 25 years. And then we get Teddy Harris, he laughs, he laughed the other day when you guys presented that and asked them to pay the utilities. They're not going to do that deal. That's our building. We need to pay the utilities, we need to let the basketball players play basketball, the football players play football, and they need to cover their insurance. But that's the only thing they need to use that facility for. Recreational sports. And just like the Ag Center, whoever they lease that stuff out to, they have a pay schedule, it's set up, it's cut and dry, and that's the way that facility needs to be. If somebody wants to have a family reunion, or a wrestling match, or a basketball tournament, or whatever, pay the county. It's fine, it's what it's for. But the city of Rossville and the community, I mean, I know that people have a, have an opinion of, well, this isn't fair for LaFad, or Chickamauga, or Rock Spring, or look at, this isn't fair, we pay the utilities for them to play. Well, they don't have 87% of their kids impoverished. So, we need to, kind of, as a community, put some of our differences aside like that, and, and maybe get the kids back on track in that community, because, you know, we've got 841 kids, and six of them are playing T-ball. What are the other 835 doing? That's all I've got to say.
Any one else tonight? Okay, we're going to move forward on our agenda. Thank you for those that spoke tonight. Okay, the next item on our agenda, we had some unfinished business, the approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Rossville for recreational services, and an update to the board and everyone out there. I've had some very good conversations with, with the leadership of Rossville. We've made some good progress, but I don't think tonight we're quite ready to move forward with this agreement. I'd like to have a couple of more weeks of time to work with the leadership of Rossville and try to get this worked out. So, my recommendation would be for us to table this for another meeting, if that's good with everybody. So, and I think we can get this resolved very quickly. So, I'd like to make the motion tonight for the board that we table the intergovernmental agreement with Rossville until the next meeting. We have a second to that?
I'll say that.
Have a second from Commissioner Stoltz to table the agreement. Any other discussion of the board?
Present.
Hearing none, all in favor to table SAI?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we table this until next meeting. Thank you. Okay, we'll ask Mr. Persley if he'll make his way up toward the front. Our next item is a resolution under our new business, R024-24, to revise the schedule of the fees for the planning department. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to revise the schedule of fees for the planning department, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County desires to revise the fee schedule for permits, inspections, zoning application, planning and development, stormwater and erosion control, special use permits, administration, and other matters. And whereas the board has the authority to set the fee pursuant to the Walker County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 1, Section 1 through 20, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County that the fees associated with the Walker County Planning Department shall be set forth in Exhibit A attached hereto and made part thereof, resolved and adopted the 11th day of July 2024. And Mr. Persley is our planning director, and I'd like to him to speak tonight and share with us what's driving these changes.
Thank you. So, the House has passed a bill, House Bill 461, that requires all local cities, counties, government to show a fee schedule where the activities, for the activities that are taking place in those municipalities, as far as building inspections, planning, a business license, and certain business licenses, license are exempt, depending on what type of operation you have. And so, this fee schedule, price-wise, inspections are amount per square footage, have stayed the same, those have not changed. We just had to do a breakdown as to where we're getting these fees from, as far as, and where the fees are going to pay the operations that are taking place, when, when folks come in, when contractors, when citizens, you know, residential or commercial industrial building is taking place. We have to show what we're doing with those funds, where they're going, and how we're paying for the operations. So, that's where this all stems from, just a breakdown, they're requiring us to have a breakdown of our fees and where those fees are going.
And also, too, under inspections, there's been a couple of additional new categories.
Yeah, that's right. So, as far as under inspections, prior to this bill, most of the inspections were wrapped up in a rough-in inspection, as far as all your MEPs, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, gas, and whatnot. So, now, we, we have that broke down, so when you come in for an individual inspection, if you're just doing electrical work, plumbing work, mechanical work, gas work, so you can pull a separate permit for that, because that's very common. Before, it was going underneath, underneath the miscellaneous inspection, because we did not have that in our system. So, now, we're just clarifying that. Same thing with demos. The state wants you to show and do an inspection on properties that are getting demoed, to make sure all the utilities are properly capped, all the sanitation is properly capped. That's something that come at a house, excuse me, at a state level as well. So, that's something that we have added to our inspection list.
Questions of the board?
No, sir.
Hearing none, you have this resolution in Exhibit A. Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
Sound move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, but Commissioner Askew, all in favor of the board, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, fee schedule is approved. Thank you, Mr. Persley.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have is a purchase order, and, and I failed to get the purchase order itself into the packet. That was an error on my part. The packets got published and printed, and I didn't have that in there, so that one's on me. But I did bring copies for the board, but it matches up what's on the agenda. Purchase order number 2024-0000-2188, for $38,600 to Newman &amp; Son Painting LLC for the Marsh House exterior painting. And there is a scope of work that was prepared for this by the historic folks that oversee the Marsh House. And so, it gives a summary of the cleaning, wood repair, surface preparation, painting to be done, is to be applied to brush coats, will not be any spraying, with the caulking to remove the gutters and replace, or fix joints there. So, cleanup, pricing, breakout, if there's any extra overcost or overruns or anything. This comes as a recommendation from Todd Byrd, our facilities manager recommends that the Marsh House exterior painting project be awarded to Newman &amp; Son Painting LLC in the attached proposal for $38,600. Their quote is in the packet as well, and it does state in there, "All painting according to the specs required by the historical society." And then, we did get a, a second quote that's also attached. It was roughly, round numbers, about $10,000 more, so we felt like this was a very good price. We did discuss this with the leadership of the Marsh House, and they were thrilled that it could be done, and found a reputable company to do so. And so, they were very excited about us moving forward with this. So, is there any questions or concerns with this quote?
And you may have covered this. So, there was some money in splash for that, is that where this?
This is actually coming out of their general fund.
Their general fund?
It's coming out of, you know, the county general fund, under our building repair budget, out of our general fund.
Okay.
So, we're now, we do have some splash money set aside for the Marsh House, but just a painting didn't meet the guidelines for the splash rules, because splash primarily is for capital purchases, and this is considered a repair.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve purchase order 2024-2188 to Newman &amp; Son Painting in the amount of $38,600?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order is approved. Okay, we're down to our department statistical data. Okay, we're down to our department statistical data. Just to point out a few things here. I know it's amazing to me every month how many calls our fire department responds to. And, you know, we don't have that many fires, but they do save a lot of lives by responding to medical calls. So we had 582 calls, and they continue to do a great job of stalling, installing smoke alarms. So that program continues. So 11 smoke alarms in June, 10 in May, so we're 63 for the year. So glad to see that people are still reaching out about the smoke alarms. Also, our single-family home construction, there's 24 permits pulled in June, 21 for May, 140 for the year. So still a lot of growth. Also, in the hot summer and a lot of cars on the road, we continue to get reports and go out and fix potholes. And so 655 potholes. So keep those calls coming because as we pave roads, we still going to be fixing potholes. And we catch them earlier, they're smaller. The longer they go, the bigger they get. So continue to keep that coming. There's a lot of other good data there, but I won't read every word of that. But good report there this month. Next item on our agenda is our commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Blakemore, District 1.
Appreciate everybody coming out, getting involved. Appreciate all of our employees and your hard work. Roberto with the Rossville still taking sign-ups. He needs a few more football players. So if you know somebody in that area that wants to play, please have them reach out to him. Thank you.
Mr. Ask.
Oh, yes, I did want to, I wanted to address Mr. Tankersley's comments. You're exactly right. The children come first. And I think that you'll see that as we work this agreement out, it'll be exactly along those lines. The children are an issue, and, and that is what it's all about at the end of the day. It's not about all the other. It's about the children.
Sometimes we, you know, we can't see the forest or trees.
That's right.
Kind of calm down.
I wanted to thank you for the information as well. That's, that's interesting information. So appreciate that. And I want to thank the department heads and everybody else who comes and participates with questions and ideas and all, because here again, it, it helps us to know better what you're thinking so that we can do a better job. So thank you.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Hart?
Yep, I agree with Mark. We're going to get that resolved in Rossville. We've been talking about it a couple of weeks, and I think we're close. Work's going on at the courthouse. Be patient if you're around there. It's going to be time-consuming, and it's going to be dirty and nasty and a lot of washing. But that's going on. We also got work going on down at the Old Family Dollar for the elections office. So it's good to see those projects moving forward. Last thing I mentioned, all of Wallack County now is in a drought, one in three levels of drought. Two-thirds of the, now, three-quarters of Georgia is also in a drought. So it's, it's really dry out there. Just be cautious of that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Stoltz.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I want to thank all of our employees. Appreciate the hard work you guys do. It's been awfully hot. So I know it's been tough, but you're doing a great job and certainly appreciate it. And Mr. Tankersley, I want to thank you as well for your comment. Very enlightening, very sad, very sad to see those statistics, but very enlightening, sir. So thank you very much for bringing that forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, one thing I want to share tonight, too, is we have our, all-inclusive playground is completed at the Civic Center Pavilion area. So our team has done a great job getting that done. Yeah. Carlin Bowers, our public work superintendent is here. Him and his crew have put a lot of work into that. A lot of hot days up there, getting the grass all in place with the sods. So it looks really, really nice. So we're going to have an official ribbon cutting at 11 o'clock on July the 31st. And part of that celebration, we're going to have some bottles of water and some soft drinks and some just good old hot dogs. And we want to invite the, the community to come out and bring the kids, and bring the kids of all abilities, because that's what that playground is about, is for kids of all abilities. And we want to see all kids there. It's free for, for people to, to use that playground. And we've taken the cones and the caution tape down, and so people can use it now. It's open. And we just ask that people are there from, during daylight hours. We don't want people there, you know, playing at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning. So it's to, you know, from, from dawn to dusk. And so we're very, very excited. That was one of our, our key splash projects for our community for recreation. And please come out and be with us. You know, I know people, I know it's going to be hot at 11 o'clock, but we do have the pavilion. We've got big fans there. The pavilion, we've done some nice upgrades to it with, with paint and new windows. And we even now have air conditioning into the bathrooms that had never been there before. And so it's just a really nice project, and we want to encourage people to come out on July 31st. From, we'll have hot dogs available from 11 to 12, but, you know, people can stay and play all day and socialize. So it's going to be, be a great day, July 31st.
And they can come early, go to the farmer's market.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Farmers Market is also that same day. Thank you for that. That starts at 8 o'clock and goes till noon. And that's another reason why we did it on Wednesday, because we know there'll be people there and want people to go to the farmer's market. And so that's the, a last official day to the farmer's market. If, if goods and produce are still coming in, they may extend that a week or so. But that may inadvertently be the last day of the farmer's market just because of the, the season.
And the drought.
And the drought.
Drought ain't helping.
But yeah, it's, it's done, been great. And Sarah Kruger and her team there at the Civic Center have done a great job orchestrating and managing that for us. And it's, it's been a good year. And Brian Hart's put a lot of work into that as well. Appreciate his engagement. Also, Wade Hutchinson with the Extension Office has helped on that. So it's been a great collaboration. So appreciate everybody involved in that. Is there any need for an executive session? Not aware of any. Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.